September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Study session items, public comments on study session related items. We're going to have a construction update from the Department of Public Works by Jeff McCula and engineer of record Sean.
Good evening. Obviously, a lot has been completed this year. You can tell there's construction in Manistee, just about anywhere you drive with all the detours and such. So, we're gonna run through, we just have a lot of pictures actually, and a little bit of data. Please stop at any point if you have a question or if there's information you would like. So, we've got projects and they are spread all over town, kinda going from north to south. We will talk a little bit about the industrial water tower, Quincy Cleveland Street, Memorial Drive, the Marina Dock repairs, the Riverwalk repairs and riverbank erosion, Waterworks Building, the Fire Hall, Maple Street Bridge, the Rural Development Phase Two A and B contracts, which is the conveyance and the headworks project, the Maywood Water Tower and Twelfth Street. So, Maple Street Bridge was completed this winter and worked on this winter and completed this spring. The original contract cost for that project was eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and it finished under budget at eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. The bridge is in very good shape now and the project went very well.
I have a question.
Sure.
It was stuck or something, there was some welding going on underneath the bridge over the weekend or the last few days?
I actually asked about that because I heard, actually I saw on social media, but I'm not aware of any problems that we had with the with the bridge. There was simply some opening and closing, and sometimes there's a bind when it gets to its final closed position, and the operators may have to rework that a little bit.
Okay, so who pays for that?
There was, there wasn't any contracted work on it, so it was just our normal operations. And the cost of operating that bridge is reimbursed by M.D.O.
Alright, thanks.
The riverbank erosion and in the Riverwalk repairs, most of that work was completed last year, but we finished it up this spring. The picture on the lower left was after all the damage from waves and ice. You can see that the old wooden Riverwalk was completely demolished for the second time in about a three-year period. It also undermined the base of the retaining wall that supports the parking and the overlook off of First Street. And the picture on the lower right is what it looks like after that that work was done. And it looks even better today with the dune grass growing and and I think the adding the the concrete sidewalk as opposed to the wood will be more durable in the future. It's also several feet higher than the previous walkway was, so it should be able to withstand the wave action better in the future. The original cost was that of that was two million dollars and the final cost was one point six seven million. So, that project was completed very well. The municipal Marina Dock, this was Phase Two, so it replaced the final five slips on the east end of the dock in their entirety, and they matched the rest of the docks that were completed after the S.A.S. damage and the insurance proceeds replaced all those docks. That project came right in on budget, so it was a very simple in and out, and it went very well. Municipal roofs, the city's been working on, how many total? Seven, eight?
Yeah, seven or eight, the wells are multiple, so.
So, there were seven or eight different projects that included the roofs, but there were two that were completed this year. One is the Fire Hall and the other was the Waterworks Building on First Street. That project came in a little over, I don't know if you can explain what the origins were.
During the project, a lot of things were added, kind of opportunity to add some items to the project. Gutters, the flight pole in City Hall was that the line had broken and basically Mark couldn't reach it, so they needed the crane to lift it. We took, there was a large, there was, I don't know if anybody noticed, but we took, there was a fire pole on top of the Ramself Theater. It was a wooden fire pole, the original construction actually went through the roof and down as part of the, actually tied in. And that was rotting, so we had to cut that out. And the only way to really do that was use this this contract with large cranes, so they picked that off and kept that. And the Clean Water Recovery Facility, there's a little section of rope that didn't get done, we added that in. So, there was this laundry list of items that we took the opportunity with the contractor to do extra work.
Water tower improvements, we actually completed work to both of our water towers. The picture on the lower left is the Maywood Tank. That had an interior painting completed and also had some safety and steel upgrades that we do each time we repaint and recoat those towers. The industrial towers, the other picture, that was an exterior paint. So, that walk, same thing, that received some steel upgrades and some safety improvements, and then also some new requirements from Eagle such as velving and it's called a mud valve, but there's just various things that we brought up to standards. I don't, I'm not sure if we've closed that final out, so we didn't have.
I think it's tracking pretty close to the contract amount, there was an upgrade.
But the total amount, that's correct, but the total amount for those two projects was three hundred and four thousand. And we had the opportunity, since we did exterior coating, to put the new logo on the on the industrial tower. Oops, I went backwards. The drinking water asset management grant that we received from Eagle was a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar contract where we hired a competitive basis, but we hired a contractor to come in and do pilot work, essentially digging down the curb stop or the valve that the city controls the water and identifying the pipe material on both the private side of that service and on the public side. And I would point out that even though that project closed out at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, we added another hundred services to this contract after the the work was completed because they were so efficient and did the work so well and we were that far under budget. The difference between the one seventy-three and the one fifty-eight will get repurposed into work that the city force account work will do, so our staff is also doing exploration and working with the engineers to identify additional services. So, we'll be able to expend all those grant funds and not have to return any and be that much further ahead of our system inventory. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Twelfth Street, this was reconstruction and not full reconstruction, but really a widening, repaving, adding curb and gutter and sidewalks to the north side while making safety improvements. And this really completes the full upgrade of that corridor all the way from Tamarack to the base of Hospital Hill or at Kajusko. That's been a long, long-term goal of the city and myself personally to get that corridor done between the two high schools in U.S. thirty-one. I think the project turned out really well, the school seems very pleased with it. We also added some safety improvements that were recommended as part of a traffic study that we did with Spicer's Engineers last year and specifically looking for how do we improve student pedestrian car interactions. So, we've got a new dedicated crosswalk at Elm, and we've got highlighted crosswalk signs with push-button LEDs on those. So, that project turned out very nice.
How those LEDs, I see you got solar panels on, are they on all the time? Are they out of time or what's the status?
They are, well, the solar, help me with this, I don't know, I'm not an expert on this, but the solar panels recharge batteries, those batteries then allow those LEDs to operate off of them.
What hours are LEDs on, are they on all the time?
You can push that button twenty-four seven.
Push it before you cross the street and it turns on, okay.
Yep, so a pedestrian, as they approach, if there's traffic, they could push that button. It alerts the incoming traffic to pause so that they can safely cross. Yep. In particular, this project was, had a very tight window. We worked with the school to make sure when the school's activities were completed for last school year, we were able to start, and then we completed the project before school was back in session and actually targeted the early athletic game. So, it came together very nicely. Memorial Drive, we are in the middle of construction of that project. That was ordered at four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. All the concrete is completed, the majority of the topsoil is in. They have fine graded the roadway, and we were scheduled for paving tomorrow, but because of the rain today, it pushed it likely to either Thursday, Friday. But we are, we anticipate getting the two courses of asphalt laid within the next week, and then they will schedule striping, and once that striping is completed, we'll be able to open that to traffic.
Is there sidewalk in front of Dallari there? I'm seeing the picture, is it farther up in there somewhere?
There is not, right in front of the, right in front of the drive entrance, no.
So, people walking in that door from, okay.
Well, and what they do is walk up through that drive entrance.
Were we able to help with the driveway? I know that they wanted to do some driving.
Yes.
So, there's a sidewalk going to Dallari from Washington on the other side, and then there's also a crossing in front of Dallari to go to the south side.
I knew there was a crossing, I didn't know if there was a sidewalk going all the way up to the grocery store or the old grocery store.
Then was there an issue with vandalizing with the new sidewalks?
Yes. There was a hundred and forty feet of size ten footprints in the freshly laid concrete and very prominent carving of the name Bruce. I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any suspects that have been identified, but that concrete was removed and relayed the next day. The Rural Development Phase Two Contract A, which is the the conveyance from Fifth and Ramstill to the treatment plant, had a cost of four point seven five million dollars. Last Friday, the forty-eight inch was tied into the diversion chamber at Fifth and Ramstill, which is the upper end of that. We've got some pictures of that. So, all of the flow is now going through the new pipeline and is working quite well. The contractor had, was expecting to begin curb and gutter concrete work this week. That got pushed back because there is a concrete shortage industry-wide. So, they're trying to time deliveries of cement, and there's a lot of big projects going into Manistee, so the concrete companies are trying to time when they can get a delivery to when they can do the output. But the the materials shortages are, they astound me and how far they reach.
That pipe is so big, you'll never plug it, right? I mean, what would that take?
We hope so, yeah.
Pickup down there.
So, here's some other photos of that. On the lower left, that that's a ten-foot diameter manhole to be able to accommodate that. You know, unless you live in that neighborhood, you probably don't realize that such heavy intensive construction was going on. But, and the engineers, I have to say, did a phenomenal job, the contractors have been amazing. The residents, we really haven't had hardly any issues, I think two complaints, in the last year that I I'm aware of. But, one of the unique things about that project is not just installing this massive forty-eight-inch pipeline, but it is the deepest thing in that street. So, the water mains had to be removed, the local sewers had to be removed, and then the new sewer installed, and then all those other utilities built back above it. So, there were temporary water mains put down both sidewalks on both sides of the streets to keep the residents served, and then temporary connections into the pipeline as they were laying it. The excavation was also in clay, so the clay had to be hauled off site, sand had to be imported to the site. One of the things that we planned out when we acquired the property from Morton Salt was we bought more land than what we physically needed for the 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 storage and the headworks, and we did that to store these soils and to save money. And so, there's gonna be, there's quite a, quite a pile on the north end of our property, but and a lot of that, most of that soil actually came from the headworks itself where it's contaminated with chlorides, with salt from all the previous industrial usage. So, per state guidelines, that's enough contamination where we either have to keep it on the property that it originated from, or we'd have to landfill it. So, we keep it on the property and saved a tremendous amount of money on that.
Time limit on that, Jeff?
On how long it can stay there? There's no time limit.
Jeff, just one again, that last slide, just to kind of put a frame of reference. So, that, the slide on the upper right is showing where two major interceptors or sewers come together, and then that heads into our new pipe that goes to the plant. Probably seventy to eighty percent of the city's flows goes through that manhole right there.
The Clean Water Recovery Facility, obviously, we built the new headworks and storage there. Total awarded cost on that is twelve million, three hundred thousand. Upper left is where we started with that facility, it was literally just a grass field, and we excavated down over forty-five feet to be able to complete this project. So, I want you to just think about it, what you're seeing there isn't even the deepest part of that facility. That's about thirty-two feet deep, what you're seeing. So, if you go down to First Street Beach and you look at that hotel going up in the air, think about that being buried down below that building when you visit that facility. And a lot of that is tankage and for the wet weather, but also for our raw sewage. And it had to be at that depth because that's the depth of the pipeline when it drains the entire city. But just a tremendous amount of work is buried and will only be remembered by the people that were working on it in some photos. This was a huge obstacle for us and challenge, this was boring that, or putting that forty-eight-inch pipeline underneath the railroad tracks. If you've ever dealt with the railroad in any of your careers, it's a very challenging, very detail-oriented, very time-consuming and very expensive process. We had two railroads to deal with. We had CSX who owns the rail, and we had Genesee in Wyoming who leases the rail and operates the trains on it. So, we had to go through, double the process, but the, you know, eventually the contractor got that pipeline through and it's working and flowing.
Would you build that head wall to run that wall, run that pipe through it?
So, what they.
Cement head wall, was that there?
Yeah, what they do is they they put a steel wall in place, temporary steel wall. Then they jacked a steel casing below the tracks and then put the concrete pipe inside of that steel casing.
Wall or casing going through, was that something that we put there for that project or was that there before?
It was put there during construction and then removed once, once the pipe was there. Yep. These are actually three automatic valves, but those are the three pipelines that drain the storage tanks and bring all the stored wet weather flows back into the plant. Those are the three raw sewage pumps. So, all the sewage that comes into this facility gets pumped into the original part of the plant to go through the secondary treatment process and the tertiary and then the final disinfection.
What's the lifespan of one of those pumps? Do you have to rebuild them every couple of years or do you just?
No, those probably have a lifespan of twenty to twenty-five years. And honestly, they they are made so that they rotate and they're, so there's redundancy also. So, that also extends the lifespan of them because those aren't running continuously twenty-four seven.
Do you have to take them apart every couple of years and rebuild, rebuild them?
There's a, there's a normal maintenance program for greasing ceiling that the treatment plant operators go through, and there are, there's probably, what, fifty pumps in that facility? So, that's just a routine thing that they do. And once in a while, when you get into that twenty-five years, if you get, most of the time it's seals or the electrical that will go bad, and we have to send those out to the manufacturer to get them refit and then they return them.
And the waste rate of plant only, we only need two of those pumps. Two is more inadequate to handle all the flows and said even peak flows, but Eagle requires you have a third pump as redundancy. So, then, like Jeff says, we'll rotate them to kind of get more life out of all of them.
So, I wish I had a picture of the wet weather flow or pumps because these are the normal dry weather, the raw pumps, but the wet weathers are probably ten times the size of those, and we've got four of those. This picture really doesn't do it justice, and I can't wait for you guys to come down and tour the facility. But those are twenty-four-inch pipes, they're massive check valves, but that's for the wet weather. So, when we get rains that are bigger than what we can treat, over a two-million gallon per day flow, then water will tip over a weir into our wet weather chamber, and then we've got four pumps that will kick on in series and pump and fill these storage tanks.
This is just a random question, if you go back to that slide, who picks the colors? Or is there some significance to certain parts being blue and some being green for some reason?
There's an industry standard for color coding. So, when you come down to the facility, you'll see that the potable water piping is a certain color, roof drains are a different color, the green means that it's raw sewage, brown is usually for sludge. So, there's different color coding, because when you, when you walk through this facility, you'll see that there's piping everywhere. And and not just in this new part, but in the entire facility, and so it helps to trace lines when we have issues and so forth.
Okay, thanks.
And I don't like to pick colors, so I'm glad it's a standard. This is just a picture of the site of two of our storage tanks. If you recall, these hold two million gallons apiece. We actually pumped lake water up into them and filled them to the brim to test them, and you actually have to fill them up incrementally because the steel stretches. And so, we fill those in three layers or three different levels, and it took us about three weeks to do that. We then used all the water that was in those tanks, drained it back into the headworks, and then that's how we tested all the different operations, pumping, velving, and then eventually ran that back through the plant. So, all three of those tanks are empty and they're ready for service.
Is that a cover I'm looking at or is that water I'm looking at?
That's just water.
Is there a cover for those?
Those are, they're not covered.
Covered, okay.
Nope. And if you look on the lower right where the yellow kind of look like teeth, that's actually the overflow weir. So, when this tank fills up, this is tank one, when this tank fills up, it spills off into a plank, into a pipe underground and then begins to fill tank two. When tank two fills up to the top, it spills and starts to go into tank three. And this facility has an automatic chlorine generator that we use high purity rock salt and electricity, and we make brine, or I'm sorry, we make chlorine with it that goes into tank three and starts to disinfect tank three so that if we ever had that Armageddon rain where it just won't stop, we, plants maxed out, all three of these tanks are maxed out, there's an outlet for that to go to Lake or to Manistee Lake, but it gets primary treatment and it also gets disinfection before it goes out. That's a hard picture to see, but that's the pavement around the plant. And I promise you, that plant looks so tiny, especially in that picture, but please always remember how much is below ground and it's a very impressive facility.
I got a question. The last two projects, are they on budget or under budget, do you think?
I'm glad you brought that up, I forgot to mention that. So, when we bid these projects out, both projects far exceeded what the engineers' estimates were. So, we went through a very extensive value engineering and then also had to cut parts out of both of those projects and make adjustments to get them into the fundable range. We're now at the point, far enough along in construction where some of the more important items that were in the original contract were able to put back in, and I still think we're gonna be about four hundred thousand dollars under our budget.
On both?
They're both funded as one.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, the aggregate of the two of them together, we're, we're doing very well. And honestly, most of the savings has come from the electrical side. Our city electrical contractor of record was very unsure on how the prices and supply chains were gonna affect this. So, we were able to save quite a bit on the electrical side of that. Anything else on that? So, we still have one project that we are still hoping to start this year, and that is the reconstruction and utility improvements on Quincy and Cleveland Street. I'm a little nervous on this, we are right teetering on the edge of whether or not we proceed this fall or whether we hold off till spring. And it's honestly, it's a day-to-day, because the contractor that has this contract is working on two of the other projects that we have, and we need them to finish up before they start over here. We originally had planned to build this in the spring of the summer, but they could not get PVC and ductile iron. Right now, if you order water main, you have, you will not expect delivery for over a year. So, it's very challenging on the supply side. They do have enough of the piping to proceed with this project, and they're trying to get another crew over to start doing the removals next week. But, looking at the schedule, if they're able to get in that and start on it right away next week, we, they believe, the contractor believes that they will hit the paving before the plants close mid-November. But but that window's closing very, very close or very rapidly.
People on Quincy will take that personal.
It's interesting because we're here in both sides. There's some that don't want it to happen right now, some that do. We, we really want to get it done.
I'm sure.
And the contractor does too. So, we, I don't know, I think I mentioned, but we have a neighborhood meeting with everybody that's, that lives on that project.
And where are you having that meeting?
We're having it here Monday night at six P.M. Six P.M.
You saying to miss, have me miss or something, you're gonna do something with the width of that, maybe wider or no?
Yeah, so, one of the big issues that has happened on that street is people have started, have parked between the edge of the roadway and the sidewalk, and a lot of them have paved it, a lot of them are just dirt, some are gravel, but those are kind of existing, not conforming, and they don't comply with the codified ordinance for Manistee. So, and projects, for the past thirty years I've been involved, we've been eliminating those as we do projects. But there's a number of them and there's kind of a concentration on Quincy Street, so we've been getting a lot of questions on that. One of the things that we, that the engineers did was to look at the width of the pavement that we had bid out and proposed, and if we widen it out further, understanding that there's a lot of on-street parking that'll be required, how does that change the cost of the contract? And what they determined was by shortening the driveway approaches, the, and some of the other items, it's only about a six thousand dollar increase in cost to increase the width of the road four feet.
Those memories should be right, a number of those people requested permission from city council and from the city and got permission to put those cutbacks in.
Yep.
Not necessarily non-conformant, but they were approved by the city.
Correct. So, in the codified ordinance, there is an exception on that, and if the property owners are able to provide that approval, then we can restore what was there.
Have any of them done that? Have you done any research? I know, I know that, I know at least four we did when I was in the police chief. We did on Quincy Street that people petitioned, we approved them. So, I don't know which, what they had, it has to be a record at someplace.
Okay.
There was a number on the far side, the north side, that we approved. I believe that it was four that we approved.
Okay.
Over the, over like a two-year period, because one person did it and then the next. Cause one person did it and then they never wanted it, somebody else wanted it, so.
That's good information. So some other projects that are, um, upcoming, some could be yet this fall. Probably most will be next year. Um, Fifth Avenue Beach, when we had the high water, we had a lot of wave run-up. That floods out Fifth Avenue and Lake Shore Drive. We've got a very small storm outlet, uh, that goes out to the river channel. And so we would like to, we've, we've been exploring, can we stop the water from getting there? Or is it better if the water gets there, we can get it back out to the lake faster so we don't have that flooding condition? Um, so we're still exploring the options on that. Um, South Lake Shore Drive improvements. So essentially that will be repaving the majority of the, uh, the north and south loop at First, First Street Beach. Um, the plan there is to do a mill and fill. So basically grind off the pavement, pave back and essentially, um, most of the same footprint. And then we're going to be very, um, we're, we're going to work with the existing footprint to restripe it and add more parking without expanding the footprint into the park. And I think it'll be, um, at a lot of capacity for beach users down there. Um, we're also working on, uh, construction of a water main loop that would go from First Street to the end of Harbor Drive. Um, and improve the water quality for both of those dead ends. But in also, um, improve the fire, fire flow conditions at both of those locations. Especially, uh, um, oh my gosh, I just. Harbor Drive, thank you. Um, by adding that water main loop, it'll increase the fire flows by seventy-five percent at the end of Harbor Drive. So, um, we need a couple easements to be able to do that. And so we're working with the property owners on that. Um, a part of that project could begin this fall. Um, but we're just, we're kind of waiting to see as permitting and approvals go.
Is that going under the road?
No, it would just go from the end of First Street, um, south.
The blue line looks like goes in the river across the river.
Yeah, and that's actually the leader up to the label, if you will.
Okay.
If I could do the pointer, it would go from the end of First Street and would go through the park up to Harbor Drive. So the project, the water main loop does this.
And all that blue line, we're going to replace it.
The blue line here is the paving.
Okay.
And it kind of, it's basically that entire loop except where we improved it when we did First Street. So it'd be from the fish cleaning station around, around the south loop and then back to the roundabout.
The dark spot part of the parking lot rather than the river, in that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it looks like it's going right through the river.
It, well, the, yeah, the bubble around it does, yes sir.
Okay.
And then the First Street Relief Sewer, um, we had, we've studied how we can, uh, improve some capacity in that area. And essentially when the sewers were separated with the Cedar Street, Cedar Street project. The sewage was routed from the riverbank, the top of the riverbank to First Street. But there's still the pipe in the main that's connected there. And we're looking at, um, setting a manhole and making a connection so that sewage can flow in two directions in that, in that area. Um, so if we ever get a huge, uh, rain event like we did several years ago, um, it, it can reduce basement backups. And certainly that improvement, um, adds more capacity than what the hotel is, is delivering to the sewer system. So it's a net, net improvement.
Can I just ask you, um, so this whole water main loop, how, um, is that happening in conjunction with what's going on with the hotel down there? Or is that, are you going to be, is it going to be a problem working if they're around them?
Sure, so the, the, the hotel is an opportunity for the water main loop. Um, we determined that the hotel has, there's enough water at the end of First Street to serve the hotel from the domestic flows, their daily water usage, but also during fire flows. The challenge from the firefighting perspective is if there is a full structure fire there and you tap the end hydrant on a dead-end line. The fire department would need to string the next five-inch line down that Cherry Street and run a long hose down there. So, um, while that's feasible, it's not, not the best. Um, and we also talked to the hotel about the water, uh, quality. And so, oops, the, um, the hotel developers are actually paying for fifty percent of the construction of that water main loop. So there's benefit both ways.
Jeff, I have a question going back to Fifth Avenue. Um, I understand what you're trying to say about the, uh, Fifth Avenue flood mitigation work. How about those walls that we talked about several years back?
Mm-hmm.
The cement walls to stop the sand from blowing on?
Yep, so, and you asked for that recently. So, uh, Sean and his team are working to update those estimates, uh, so we can bring them back to you and tell you what those would be.
Okay, thanks. I think I'd say the DPW a lot of time, having to, you know, move sand every day to get it off parking spaces. Okay, thanks.
We only have to move sand when the wind blows. But it's every time the wind blows.
Exactly.
Jeff, not related to this, but a lot of great product by the way, really, really good stuff. But I noticed in the Dab Me Mist, there's some issue with the sewer in Friconos? What's going on there? I don't know about a pump.
Sure, um, so Friconos is, has a, obviously they have a sewer lateral that serves their basement and goes into our, uh, twenty-four inch pipe in the street. Um, that corridor of, of buildings has had sewer backups for decades.
The reason Elks?
Yep, and it was, it was due to, um, some of the combined sewage, some of the illicit connections, um, that were coming into that pipeline. So the city has done a lot of work to identify those illegal connections and eliminate them. We've also did a lot of work up around the Jefferson School area to line pipes to get groundwater from coming into those pipes, which has reduced those flows quite a bit. But to protect that Friconos building, they have a backflow preventer in their sewer. So three times this year, when there have been wet weather flows, that valve, that check valve has closed. An internal sewage from, generated from within the building doesn't have a way to get through it. So it's backed up out of floor drains. So, um, the city manager and I had a meeting with, with the contractor and, and with Ted. Was it, I think it was last week, week before. And what we're recommending, along with input from the engineers, is to put in essentially like a, a sump pump, an injector pump. So that, uh, an injector pump is pressurized sewage leaving, has double check valves. But they're able to pump their sewage out of the building even if the main out in front of it is full. So it, it's, um, uh, we had a good meeting, I think they've got a good option to solve that issue.
Are they the only one having an issue now with the Elks, ever?
As far as I know, the Elks hasn't had an issue in quite some time.
The Marina, did any of you one?
We haven't had, well, the Marina operates the same way. The Marina has a, an injector pump, a little pump station, same thing.
I, I have two questions. Um, the first one, the parking areas that you were talking about over on Quincy, is that the same issue that, um, over in front of Stu's?
Yes.
That was in their parking area?
Stu's and Bill's Place, correct.
Okay, so it's just going to be like a sidewalk and?
It, where there was part, where people parked up across the sidewalk in front of both of those businesses. The curb will run past that and that will have topsoil and grass now.
Okay. Okay, the second question I have, like, okay. So this makes sense in my head, so I'm going to try to have, like, make it make sense to you. Um, so Memorial Drive, you repaved the street and then did like a sidewalk? And it was four hundred and eighty-eight thousand? Okay, so I kind of went through your, when you did your slide. And it came out to be, you were about four hundred and fifty thousand under budget with all of those projects. The only project was, that was over was the, like the roofs and stuff, and it was only like thirty-three thousand. So since we already budgeted all of those funds, couldn't you take that four hundred and fifty thousand and do another street that isn't on the list that's really bad and just repave that? That's, or is that just not?
So there, absolutely, there's potential for that. These projects are paid for from a lot of different ways. So the rural development projects are loaned from the water and sewer funds, the utility funds. And we actually had to put or pledge some cash for our contingencies for that. So when I say that that's going to end up about four hundred thousand dollars, we could add some work to that. Or we may not want to incur that debt and just keep those as reserves and use it on a future project. We haven't had those internal discussions yet.
Well, didn't count the last two.
Okay, on the other projects, so like Memorial Drive, that is being paid for with capital improvement. Remember we sold a six million dollar bond for capital improvements? And so that's spread across almost twenty projects. So we're, we're tracking how those are coming in, some are higher, some are lower. Um, so we need to kind of balance that all out and see where, where we're at in the end. Um, and then some of those projects also have water and sewer contributions, so. But you're absolutely correct, when, when we're on the plus side of the column and we get done, then we look for where we can fund the next opportunity and do the next improvement.
Okay, but do we have to wait again and like, wait a couple of years and put that road back? You know what I mean? Like you have schedules of what roads, what year does what?
I'll, I'll try to answer your question. So this isn't the first time this has happened. And when it has happened in the past, what we've done is gone into the transportation improvement program and tried to advance a street that was maybe two years out and make it one year out. And then, um, we would always come to council before we started that process, receive your approval, and then they would get updated in the next, uh, budget cycle.
So given the ability to, to pave, to actually jump out and pick one tomorrow, like say we're going to do third street or fourth street, it's not really realistic because you couldn't get it done and paved this year.
You couldn't do it this year, right.
And it'll have to be moved to spring.
Right.
Right, because maybe the, the gas off plant flows what in mid-November?
In November.
But we could pick it and do it in the spring.
We, we could pick a, if, when all this money flushes through and then we've got an opportunity, we could pick a project and plan for it in twenty-three, yes.
Okay.
Jeff, I got a question on Quincy. It, it is, are we expecting to have the same issue when we dig up Quincy Street? That we're going to find sawdust and, and, uh, all different kinds of unusual debris? And, and has that been already factored in? Because I know it was a little bit of a surprise on the last street project.
It, it was on Jackson Street, we, we had a lot of sawdust. So, um, the engineers core those streets. We, we drill holes to understand what the pavement is, what the base is, what soils are below them. It doesn't tell the whole story, um, but we haven't had any indications of that. And I think the most important thing is, if you can remember back on Jackson Street, the pavement was really odd shaped. And that was from differential settlement from having those, those materials below them. And I don't see any evidence on that on Quincy. And Quincy is just the pavement is worn out and shot. So we're, we're, we're praying we don't have that issue.
One other thing on that too is we, there's a line, it's called subgrade undercut, which is kind of where we're trying to guess at, poor soils. So that's always in every project, sometimes these projects come on, under, it means we're locked out of the soils and we didn't have to use that. And so there's, there's something there.
There is a contingency though.
It's a second contingency item, not to the extent we see it with the sawdust. And I was a little surprised.
Well, a lot of times when you see these projects coming under, it's because we didn't have to use that pay item. You know, and actually I think on, on Jackson, it was only about a ten thousand dollar increase because we used the quantity that we had there just in case. And then we exceeded that by ten thousand. And they moved a lot of material out of there.
Yep, on that Fifth Avenue, uh, road, South, North Lake Shore, them homes have always flooded over there. I remember when I patrolled, those homes always had to water in the basement. Is there any way to breeze up that road so the water would run off automatically?
Well, from, from my experience, the flooding that occurs is groundwater that comes up through the basement. So the, the basements at times are below the Lake Michigan level. And that's where the water's coming in. It's not coming from the streets or up through the sewers. Um, the only thing I didn't talk about was fire hall improvements, you want to hit on that real quick?
So we'll be putting, we have the architectural drawing pretty much complete. We got to finalize some site work. And then we'll be putting out a bid package for improvements at the fire hall. Um, has to do with point, um, tuck pointing the building, some windows. Uh, there's quite a laundry list that Mark would like to have done. So the way we're bidding it is, we're kind of have a lot of alternatives and we're going to see how far down the list we can get with the budget. Um, so that'll be going out, uh, this winter, fall, winter, and looking at spring construction.
And the Onion Dome is going to continue to be copper?
Yeah, we're not touching that. Uh, we'll be, the wood, there's some poor wood that's around it, different things like that we'll be looking at.
When they painted it, the last time did they clean up all this cement block and all that?
Could get into quite a discussion about painting bricks, but, um, it, what happened, what we believe happened, at least our historical architect believes happens, is the type of paint you use, the old bricks want to breathe. They're designed to let air move in and out of them, that keeps them dry and they drain. If you paint them, you seal that moisture in. And then as soon as it's sealed in, you go through winter and you start popping, the bricks start popping, the mortar starts popping. So, um, sometimes you think you're doing a good thing by painting, but it isn't always a good thing because you conceal it in. There's certain paints that are designed to breathe and that's what you need to use, so.
So the last comment I have is, um, I've been working on trying to reduce the amount of sewage and overflows that go into the, into the lake for my entire career. And I always got nervous when it rains. Now I'm excited when it rains because I want to make sure that this thing works and, um, but right now we're in position where, um, we won't have a discharge into Manasty Lake anymore. And I think that's a huge, huge achievement for the community. Any other questions?
Was there a sinkhole behind River Street today? Or like Wilson?
So, yeah, we had, uh, we had a sinkhole actually two weeks ago in the alley, um, just behind City Hall. And, um, our crews excavated it, determined it was too deep to, to, for us to do the repairs safely. So we worked with Swodorski Brothers the last two days to dig it up and do the repairs. Um, they were broken laterals that connected to our main.
Is that going to be an added cost or like budget?
Um, those are typal, typically things that we absorb, uh, but we've got to sort it out because they're on the private side. Uh, so we, we're going to have to sort out who pays for what. I let the city attorney know in our staff meeting, he didn't seem all that excited, but. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the council, anything else under other? You got something? Okay.
City manager, when are those shooters going to be done on the, right on?
So I think we had them, I think October, early November, I can verify the date, but.
Well, you know, that, that gentleman that rented them out here, letting, I mean, I don't know if it's the parents doing it or who, but there's young kids riding them suckers. They're going like hell up Cypress Street, no helmets, nothing. They just like riding around. They go down River Street drag racing, but I follow them.
And they're, yeah, they, they do need a credit card in order to do that with the app. But if someone's doing that for them, that's going to be an enforcement issue. Yeah, we're going to need to up, we'll watch for that, the police will have to pull them over, keep an eye on that. So mainly River Street, is it?
Well, they've been up Cypress Street, on sidewalks, on the road. Um, and I want you to take a ride by Rogers on Twelfth Street and look at all the junk he's got in front of him. I think it's time to write a ticket. I mean, he hauled home all the neighbors' branches and, uh, paper bags, whatever the people had in it. Holds it all home and it's all sitting by his house. He's hauled home five chickens he's gotten now because his pigeon got murdered, he said. Uh, he's, he's got hauling junk, it's just piling up over there.
And he has food bar painted on his fence.
Yeah, he's got all kinds of junk out in front, right? It's getting ridiculous again, he's starting to build up again.
On Twelfth Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then he, you know, and then he would sit there and yell at people going by, so. I know Clinton came by one day and said, well. I know Clinton came by one day and said, well, he seems to be quiet now. Or he was quiet for two days and he started up again. So I don't know if he's on his meds or not. Um, yep, on the bathrooms at the Marina, are they painting those things? Cause we were in there one day. Just looking things over in the light, some of the lights have burned out and it looks pretty shady with, with no, no light in there and then the paint.
So we've been working with uh Manastee Proud and those volunteers and kind of going through a wish list of things that wanna get accomplished. And we were, um, there was some of that improvement that was talked about a month ago. And we wanted to wait until we got a little out of the summer season before we went in and started doing some of those renovations.
Yeah, I've got all the list of what Kelly had made up and gave it to everybody. So.
Yeah, but there's definitely some things that need to be done.
A lot of things that need a lot of money. So also the last thing I wanna bring up is, have anybody thought about meeting, reference, paying the employees two dollars more like we talked the other meeting? I mean, you know, the guys are out late at night fixing water mains. Uh, everybody was watching on TV. They talked about how somebody, companies are giving a couple of dollars more to the guys to stay working uh because people are changing off, not coming to work. And I thought we should have a meeting to talk about this.
I'd like to finish the negotiations with the fire department first, but yeah, I, I think that's kind of the priority right now.
So I, yeah, that, yeah, right. And then I think we should talk about, you know, rewarding these guys. Cause they, I mean, they come in on nights to fix things and they're always out in winter time. So I think it'd just be, you know, a lot of companies are doing this as a good gesture. Paying them extra. Thank you.
You. Nick?
Nothing. Me?
I have nothing further. Um, I will say that I did help out this weekend on neighborhood restoration, beautification commission efforts. And I think I got pretty worn out. But Lucas was in charge of that. Um, I think we made some great progress. Um, the, the homeowners that the police and Mary Kay Wilcox talked to were enthusiastic and grateful that we came and they are interested in doing the, the grants, uh, applying for the grants that are available to help fix the outside of their houses. So I think it was pretty successful. So. That's all, yeah? Make a motion, George.
Motion.
There you go. George.